Good evening. Tonight is Monday, May the 8th. This is the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting and I'd like to call this meeting to order. To begin with, we're going to have the presentation of colors from the Air Force JROTC Cadets from JM Robinson and the presentation of our National Anthem will be Cox Mill High School. If the others that aren't standing would please stand as we join the Cox Mill folks.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket right there, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Eric, colors?
I'll take a moment just to introduce the young men and women that were up here before us. The Air Force JROTC Cadets from JM Robinson. Carrying the flag was Cadet Lieutenant Gordon Donovan. Carrying the North Carolina flag was Cadet First Lieutenant Tony Maglione. Guarding the colors were Cadet First Lieutenant Jay Van Burleson and Cadet Technical Sergeant Paris Carter. The cadets are instructed by Lieutenant Colonel Scott Rose and Master Sergeant Wayne Outrum, both U.S. Air Force retired. The Star Spangled Banner was performed by the members of the Cox Mill High School Chorus. They are directed by Ms. Jennifer Smith Cook. Chorus members include Miles Arnold, Isabella Di Petro, Aubrey Geltz, Juliette Harris, Max Hudson, Michaela John, Kalen Mawal, Sabrina Markelino, Allison McGee, Sheham Metta, Brittany Pasqual, and Megan Thornock. And I want to thank each of them for what they did tonight and what a great tribute to our country. Board members, it's time for us to adopt our agenda. Is there a motion?
Move.
All right, Mr. Harrison makes the motion. Mr. Walter seconds that motion. All in favor of adopting the agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, the agenda is adopted and that brings us to the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, Mr. Tim Vaughn is coming up along with Ms. Lynn Reimer and Aurelia Edwards.
Good evening Chairman and Board Members. This week is National Teacher Appreciation Week, so I'm even more excited to recognize and honor our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. We say thank you to Mr. Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their continued support. We value this partnership tremendously. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for May is Ms. Amanda Barrett. Ms. Barrett, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team who are here tonight, please come forward. Amanda Barrett is a preschool teacher at Mary Frances Wall Center. She was nominated for this month's award by parents of two different students. The first nomination reads, "My son has been so lucky to be a Ms. Barrett's preschool class this year at Mary Frances Wall. She is an exceptional teacher. These little ones are learning so much through play and their own interests. My son is so excited to go to school and has shed a few tears on more than one occasion on Friday afternoons telling me how much he will miss his teacher until Monday morning. He is learning excellent social-emotional skills as well as the academic basics that will prepare him for kindergarten. They use solution cards in their classroom to solve problems and my son has loved using this tool so much that Ms. Barrett made us some to use at home. When our family welcomed two young foster children earlier this year, Ms. Barrett was extra attentive to him as well as adjusted to the change and ordered a book for him about families and how we all belong to one another. I have absolutely no doubt that she has my child's best interests at heart and as a parent, is there anything better?" The second parent nomination reads, "Ms. Barrett has done an amazing job with my son this year. He started the class behind in his language and social development and has made so much progress. He loves his teacher and coming to school. This is all because of her. I wish every student and parent had the opportunity to have their educational career start with such a tremendous teacher." Ms. Barrett, congratulations and thank you for the care and concern that you give your students and families. Please allow Mr. Vaughn and Ms. Reimer to present you with your award and then allow our board members to congratulate you as well.
Next up is our Impact Through Education Awards. Ms. Edwards is going to be presenting those.
Yes, absolutely. Tonight we will recognize our final set of Impact Through Education Award winners for the 2016-2017 school year. We offer our thanks and gratitude to BB&amp;T for its sponsorship of these awards once again this school year, along with our sponsor and partner at the Cabarrus Regional Chamber. Support from our community is something that sets Cabarrus County Schools apart and it makes it such a special place. So to our partners, we say thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, onto tonight's awards. We will present the Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Weddington Hills Elementary School and Concord High School. We will begin with Weddington Hills and I would like to invite any members of the Weddington Hills Administrative Team to come forward at this time so that they can stand with their students and staff. Our first honoree from Weddington Hills is Anthony Antonakakis. Would Anthony and his family please come forward? Anthony Antonakakis is a 5th grade student at Weddington Hills that stands out among his peers. He is constantly thinking ways to help improve his classroom and his school. Anthony participated in the school's musical this year. However, he had a very special role. While the students were all on stage in the spotlight, Anthony was in the sound booth running the show. He attended every practice and knew the show inside and out. He encouraged the cast with his positive attitude and support. Anthony also works after school on the nature trail with Coach Barron. It's very important to him that his school always looks its very best. Anthony stays on the go. He participated in Chess Club and Wildcats on the Move, having just completed our annual 5K. He enjoys soccer, basketball, and being with his friends. Family is also very important to Anthony. He spends as much time as possible with his amazing parents and older sisters Nicolette and Alex. According to Anthony, his family has inspired him to always try his best and to never give up. Congratulations Anthony, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Weddington Hills Elementary School. Our next honoree is Harmony Kreider. Would Harmony and her family please come forward? Harmony Kreider is a 5th grade student at Weddington Hills who goes the extra mile in everything that she does. She always puts others first and still maintains her own responsibilities. She is quick to complete a task without being asked and knows just what needs to be done. Every teacher at Weddington Hills has experienced the graciousness and demeanor of Harmony Kreider. Not only is she a pleasure to be around, she also picks you up when you're down. She has a special way of turning anything bad into a new light, always seeing the positive. Harmony participated in Wildcats on the Move and even though she has a breathing condition, which she doesn't see as a setback, rather as a new opportunity to excel. She has a large family who's very important to her. She enjoys participating in a lot of activities such as Defy Gravity, Monkey Joe's, and her favorite, Cookouts. She says that she is the way she is because that's how she was raised. Congratulations Harmony, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Weddington Hills Elementary School. Our first staff member honoree for Weddington Hills is Cheryl McDaniel. Ms. McDaniel, would you and your family please come forward? Cheryl McDaniel has been a part of the Wildcat family for 20 years. She began her journey teaching 2nd grade and was the Teacher of the Year county finalist for 2010 and 2011. Cheryl then moved to the Interventionalist role for two years and is currently finishing her 6th year as a lead teacher at Weddington Hills. Staff and students are very fortunate to have her at their school. She is an amazing resource in regards to her knowledge of the curriculum, coaching, and support for teachers, as well as her creative and alternative methods of reaching students at all ability levels. Cheryl has very high expectations for all students and her instruction is task-oriented, engaging, and provides immediate, direct, and encouraging feedback. She is creative in finding ways to meet the needs of all learners. She also delivers professional development that is relevant, provides tools to help implement training immediately, and coaches teachers to ensure they receive continued support. Cheryl has made tremendous impacts on the lives of others and has touched the lives of many students and staff members in the community. Congratulations Ms. McDaniel, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Weddington Hills Elementary School. Our final honoree for Weddington Hills this evening is Maya Lofti. Ms. Lofti, please come forward with your family. Maya Lofti walks into the building every day with a smile for students and adults alike. She works tirelessly every day to support students in kindergarten and 1st grade through small group instruction and individual assistance. Mrs. Lofti is fluent in several languages and uses her experiences as an English language learner to assist those in the process of learning as well. She provides outreach to families new to the area by translating school materials, helping them find jobs and homes, and supporting them with advice and information as they adjust to their new community. Ms. Lofti is an incredible asset to her teachers, her students, and all stakeholders of the Weddington Hills community. Congratulations Ms. Lofti, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Weddington Hills Elementary School. And now for our Concord High School honorees. I'd like to invite any members of the Concord High School Administrative Team to come forward at this time. Our first Concord High honoree is Madeline Bavazo. Madeline, would you and your family please come forward? Madeline Bavazo is a standout student among the Concord High class. Not only is she a great academic student, she shows maturity and open mindedness beyond her years. She is a first-generation college student navigating the educational system for her family. Madeline is a great communicator and organizer. During the spring of 2016, she initiated a mentoring program for incoming 9th grade students. Madeline used an interest survey to pair students, train the mentors, and lead everyone through the beginning process. She created a mentoring program that will continue even when she leaves Concord High School. Madeline is respected by her peers for her honesty, reliability, and her high ethical standards. Her teachers describe her as dedicated, inquisitive, and well-prepared for her future educational journey. Congratulations Maddie, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Concord High School. Our next student honoree is Devon Mullins. Devon, please come forward with your family. As a junior this year, Devon started a club called Student Advocates for Solidarity. He began contemplating this club in the May of 2016 when he sent his teacher an email with his ideas that read, "For quite a while now, some friends and I have been considering ways that we could bring a nonpartisan political club to Concord High School next year. I have lots of friends who have different political views but were always able to come to some sort of compromise and agreement. Though, being in civics, I've seen how hard it is to, how hard it can be to compromise with some people. The idea of the club seems like it would not only be a way to keep students interested and informed on political issues, but also a way to give back to our community." Well, he made his idea a reality and the club now hosts guest speakers, has discussions, and participates in community service. It's commendable that Devon wants to make an impact on both his school and his local community. As part of his efforts to improve his own school, Devon's also a part of the Principal's Student Advisory Commission, believing that his voice and participation can make a positive impact in his local community. Devon is also interned with the Board of Education due directly to his interest in education and local government. Currently, he has applied for the Youth Commission as part of his efforts to continue his goal of making an impact at his local community. As a student, Devon has accepted the challenge of enrolling in accelerated courses including honors and AP classes. He has also been able to excel in those courses while participating in many extracurricular activities. Devon has a superior work ethic and can engage with his teachers in conversation about his work or the content on very mature level for his age. His interest in politics and making an impact on the community is part of his long-term life goal of becoming a constitutional lawyer. With his knowledge and passion for politics and law, that goal is something that he can assuredly achieve. Congratulations Devon, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Concord High School. Moving on to our Concord High School staff award winners, would Dr. Corinne Anderson and her family please come forward? Dr. Anderson decided to pursue a career in education because of her belief that through education, one can attain the unattainable. She has over 20 years of experience in teaching with over 11 spent in teaching foods to enterprise. Additionally, she has taught foods and nutrition, Foods One Fundamentals, and team living. She has a double major in psychology and home economics, a master's in education from Wake Forest University, and recently received her doctorate from Gardner Web University. Dr. Anderson is the type of teacher that everyone aspires to become: patient, kind, trustworthy, and always striving to better herself. When you walk into your classroom, you will see her floating around and helping her students with patience and grace. She pushes her students to see past the obvious and helps them to achieve their highest potential while preparing them not only for the classroom but for life. She has the biggest heart for helping others and has become a mentor to every colleague that she meets. Two of her mentees say that without Dr. Anderson, they wouldn't be the teachers or the people that they are today. She has taught them much more than just teaching strategies, but she has also taught them how to enjoy life to the fullest and never stop striving to achieve goals because nothing is unattainable if you have ambition. Dr. Anderson is always there for everyone, never making anyone feel like a burden, and is always there to help point out the positives, provide solid advice with solutions, and provide a laugh or two to put a smile on your face. Dr. Anderson makes herself available at all times for her students, past and present: her colleagues, her family, and her friends, while still managing to achieve her doctorate degree and help with numerous committees. There is no one that we can think that is more deserving of this recognition and we thank her for all that she does here at Concord High School. Congratulations, Dr. Anderson, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Concord High School. And our final honoree for Concord High School this evening is Ms. Deborah Russell. Ms. Russell, please come forward with your family. Deb Probst-Russell is the heart and soul of Concord High School. Over the past 30 years, every student walking the halls of CHS has been impacted by her wisdom, kindness, and love for Spider Nation. Students begin their first days enrolling with Ms. Russell where you will often find her sharing with families the school traditions, expectations, and the pride of wearing black and gold. Her enthusiasm and dedication to CHS motivates staff, students, and the community to make her school the very best. Ms. Russell is known as the core of the Spider family and spends her days advocating for all students to reach their dreams. She begins a student's enrollment at CHS, advocates for the student throughout his or her years in high school, and then prepares the student's diploma for graduation. Ms. Russell is Concord High School: the beginning, the middle, and the end of a Spider's education. She has a heart of gold and everyone knows that Dr. A. might be the principal of Concord High School, but Deb Probst-Russell is the boss. Ms. Russell is retiring this year and it will be impossible to replace her smile, her positive attitude, and her baking and cooking skills. She has made a gigantic impact on every student and family and staff member for the last three decades. Congratulations, Ms. Russell, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Concord High School.
We have Dr. Roth and Ms. Oliphant in front of us for the Young Authors and they're going to introduce our Young Author Award winners.
Good evening, School Board Chair and School Board Members. Each year, schools have the opportunity to participate in the North Carolina Young Authors Contest. We are very excited to recognize our Cabarrus County Schools students who are state winners. I'm going to first invite our middle school winners to come forward. From CC Griffin Middle School, Gracie Newsome and Fallon Taylor. From JM Freeze Magnet School, Chloe Boujold. If these students would please come forward.
Good evening, Board Members. Our elementary Young Authors are as follows. For Beverly Hills, we have Madison Davis and Desmond Monte. From Carl A. Fur Elementary, we have Carissa Carr, Sophia Johnson, and Maryliana Williams. From Charles E. Boger Elementary, we have Maggie Collins and Kiara Lewis. From Cox Mill Elementary, we have Nerali Kadia, Ayush Paul, Rhea Richard, and Sani Yupaturo, Yupaturi. From Mount Pleasant Elementary, Olivia Grace Johnson. From Pitt School Road Elementary, we have Evan Charles Fisher and Chloe Newton, who were the judges' choice, won the judges' choice award. From Arbour Mccallister Elementary, we have Maggie Collins and Kiara Lewis. From Arbour McAllister Elementary, we have Zoe Wagner and Isabel York. Rocky River Elementary, we have Sarah Henson. From W.R. Odell Elementary, we have Jada Brooks. Congratulations to all of our elementary young authors. We're very proud of you. The National Honors Association of Elementary School Principals and the American Student Council Association has named Rocky River Elementary School's Student Council a 2016-2017 Honor Council. Would Rocky River students please come forward? These students that are a part of this Honor Council are Katie Bellucci, Savannah Buchanan, Jimmy Mures, Bures, Courtney Childs, Alexis Connor, Lexi Cox, Sahara Horner, Tamia Hyde, McKenzie Nun, Michaela Stevens, and Jayla Wilson, and they are advised by Elizabeth With this honor, Rocky River is the first and only North Carolina school to receive this national recognition. The Honor Student Council Excellence Award, developed by the National Association of Elementary School Principals, recognizes outstanding achievement conducted by student councils in the area of community service, student leadership, citizenship, and school spirit. Congratulations, Rocky River.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. The Board members of Salvation Army would like to thank the following schools for their support of the Salvation Army Angel Tree and Bell Ringers program. The following schools are W.R. Odell Primary School, Ms. Angela Penniger; Northwest Cabarrus High School Ju-, Junior ROTC; Mount Pleasant High Students, Julie Love; Jan Robertson High School Key Club, Ms. Ashley Rush; Concord High School, Ms. Jill Gardner; Central Cabarrus High School, F.B., L.A. And I don't have the one, the other one for Concord High, but we would like to thank you to volunteering benefits students and families in Cabarrus and Stanley County, and this really, really impacts the lives of these families, doing the most good as we impact the community. Each year, the Bell Ringing Program starts in November, and we welcome volunteers from the schools, from the communities, churches, and organizations that's interested in helping. Thank you so much.
Next up is Ms. Reimer and Mr. Tyson presenting the Athletic Honors.
Good evening, Board members and Ms. Reimer. Looking good up there in that seat. We are here to recognize our state champions this year. We've had a great year of Cabarrus County Athletics so far and look forward to having quite a few more state champions this spring, too. I think there's a great chance of that happening. We had one state championship team this year and four individual state champions of this winter. I'd like to first bring forward Cox Mill High School's basketball, men's basketball team. Somebody gonna bring them in? Might want to go to commercial break. Can you get Jody? So while they're looking for Cox Mill's basketball team, we might want to make sure the individual state champions are ready to come up after that. There he is. He had him in the locker room a little longer. Right.
Say, you're the only person I knew that could lose a basketball.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Appreciate that. All right, now that we have the Cox Mill Basketball Team in here, I want to congratulate you guys on a job well done. It was a privilege to watch you folks play this year. I got to see you play in person about eight or nine times and got to see you at the Dean Dome. You guys had me a little bit scared during the last couple of minutes. Y'all probably just wanted to see Coach Barbie sweat a little bit, right, to earn it, but outstanding year. These guys beat Eastern Guilford seventy to sixty-six in the state finals to win the state championship in the 3A, overall record of twenty-seven and six. They were sixteen and two in the conference, SPC champions, and also the Charlotte Observer Sweet Sixteen champion as well. So I will call out your names. You'll just step forward when I call you out. Wendell Moore, Khalid Davis, Jalen Bonham, Caleb Stone Carewell, Tyshaun Claude, Cody Klein, Joel Hall, Colleen Noon, Cooper Givens, Francis C.O., Jakari Johnson, Malcolm Morgan, and Coach Jody Barbie. Congratulations, guys. Great job. You guys that came here to shake the door. You guys stay up here. You individual champions stay up front here. All right, now we have individual state champions this year. Patrick O'Brien, step forward. Patrick is a back-to-back state champion here in diving. So congratulations, Patrick, and we're looking forward for a three-peat as well, okay? Good job, great job. Next, we have Tyler Gregor. Tyler is also a repeat state champion, a back-to-back state championships, as he won the hundred-and-thirteen-pound class last year and won the hundred-and-twenty-six-pound weight class this year, and he was also voted the 3A Most Outstanding Wrestler of the State Tournament, and Tyler's a junior. We have Robbie Epler. Robbie is a swimming champion again, second state championship for him. He is a junior. He won the fifty-yard free last year, the hundred this year, and he finished, well, he finished second in the, second in the state championship, won the fifty, excuse me, won the fifty last year, second, for his second state championships. He was two tenths of a second for winning the two-hundred free this year, and Coach Ray Morgan in his dynasty said that's only about an inch, an inch and two-thirds of winning a second state championship this year. So he, Robbie was also the 2016-17 SPC Swimmer of the Year. Congratulations, Robbie. Did Gabriel Stainback make it tonight? He didn't.
Folks, my most humble apology, I actually skipped Mr. Vasilese in the academic honors. So we hold academics at a high level here. Mr. Vasilese is coming in to bail me out, right, Mr. Vasilese?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, it is my extreme honor, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, it is my extreme honor to be able to present to you this group of significant scholarship recipients this evening. Each of these students has received recognition for their outstanding work. There is no doubt, the school counselors who submitted their names did so with a great sense of pride for these young men and women. The scholarships for these twelve academic achievers represent over one-point-five-million dollars in support for their college experience. These young people standing before us tonight are at the launching stage of great futures ahead. In the song Closing Time, the band Simisonic reminds us that every new beginning comes from some other beginning's end. Yeah. So as we approach the end of the beginning of their journey, please join me in recognizing each of them. So, young people, as I call your school's name, please step forward, and actually, as I call your individual name, please step forward, and when I'm doing so, I'll be speaking about you and then step back into the row. Okay? All right. From Central Cabarrus, Cole Foster. Cole Foster will be attending University of Tampa. Cole Foster received an ROTC Army Full Scholarship in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twelve dollars. Foster was one of over twenty thousand applicants for the valued Army ROTC Scholarship. Cadet Foster will be appointed as a Second Lieutenant in the United States Army. Elliot Foster. Elliot Foster received a Presidential Scholarship in the amount of one-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. He'll be attending Livingstone, and he has earned a full scholarship to Livingstone for his outstanding SAT, ACT scores, will be a member of a nationally-ranked band program, and for his outstanding grade point average. Trent Liches. Trent Liches will be going to the Air Force Academy for an Air Force appointment, where his scholarship amount is one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars. Upon graduation, Cadet, Cadet Liches will be appointed as a Second Lieutenant in the United States Air Force. Cadet Liches plans to become a pilot in the world's most advanced air and space force. Let's see. There were fourteen hundred candidates, were, only fourteen hundred candidates worldwide were offered this opportunity, and we congratulate you. Strong showing by Central. The next school we'll honor is Concord High School, who will be represented by Yara Quezera Marino, who will be attending Davidson College, where she has received the Quest Bridge Scholarship for approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. Everybody. I know, I did the same thing. So this is a scholarship designed to, to really reward high-achieving students to prestigious colleges and universities. It's a four-year scholarship that covers tuition, room and board, and others, other expenses. Okay. Give me a minute, I've kind of lost my way for a minute. So our next scholarships are from Cox Mill High School. So Alicia Powell. Alicia will be attending Elon University. Among other things, Alicia received the Odyssey Scholars Program. The amount of the scholarships that we have listed is eighty-eight thousand dollars. It's worth noting that Odyssey scotters, Odyssey's, yeah, Odyssey scholars, easy for me to say, take advantage of intellectually demanding and dynamic courses while furthering their personal and professional development. This program includes a stipend for books and supplies and a global study grant to be used for an approved study abroad and Study USA program. Next, we have Maggie Roach. Maggie Roach will be attending Wofford, and she is recipient of the Daniel Scholarship. The Charles E. Daniel Scholarship is one of the highest honors given by Wofford to incoming first-year students. The late Mr. Charles E. Daniel was devoted to promoting the development of orderly industrialization, improved transportation, and expanded educational opportunities in South Carolina and the region. So this award is in the memory of Mr. Daniel and is identified for young people who are developing leadership. Our next award is from Early College, and this is for Miranda Perusek. Miranda will be attending NC State University, and this award is through the North Carolina Division of Veteran Affairs Class II Scholarship in the amount of ninety-four thousand-eight-hundred dollars. This is a full-ride scholarship for students who have been, who have a veteran parent rated by the U.S. Department of Veterans Administration as receiving some, some disability from their service, or were awarded a Purple Heart for wounds received. Okay, we're gonna move on to Hickory Ridge High School. Hickory Ridge is represented by Kelsey King. Kelsey King is gonna be attending UNC Chapel Hill. She is a recipient of the Morehead Kane Scholarship in the amount of one-hundred-and-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-four dollars. The Morehead Kane Scholarship covers all expenses for four years of undergraduate study at UNC Chapel Hill. It also features a distinctive program of summer enrichment experiences designed to support students as they learn and grow. It's a highly prestigious award to an outstanding university. Next, we have Taylor Malachowski, who is recipient of the EC Scholars in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. The EC Scholars will be, this is an award to attend East Carolina University. The EC Scholars Award is the most prestigious merit-based scholarship award given by the university to the highest achieving students. I went out of order. I've heard of him. Just creating some suspense for the Fur family. Next, we have Jacob Fur. Jacob Fur will be attending the University of Alabama. Jacob received a Presidential Scholarship in the amount of one-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars. These are for students with outstanding ACT scores between thirty-two and thirty-six, with outstanding SAT scores between fourteen-hundred and sixteen-hundred on the old scale, and GPAs of at least three-point-five. So this is an outstanding and just remarkable scholarship that Mr. Fur has received for out-of-state students. We congratulate you, Jacob. Our next award is for Destiny Carmichael. Destiny is representing Northwest Cabarrus High School. Destiny will be attending Howard University. Destiny received a Leadership Scholarship in the amount of seven-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars. The Howard University Leadership Scholarship covers full-time tuition, on-campus housing meals and fees. meals and fees, is a full-ride scholarship for four years for as long as the student continues to maintain their 3.0 GPA. Destiny, congratulations on your leadership and on this award. Our last recipient in attendance tonight is Maya Galvin. Maya is also from Northwest Cabarrus High School, and Maya will be attending Appalachian State University, where she has received the Chancellor Scholarship in the amount of $58,436. This covers full institutional costs for eight semesters, which include fees, book rental, room and board, to an outstanding university upstate. So we congratulate you on that. Thank you, Maya. If I may for just a moment and tell you about a few students who are not able to be here this evening, and I will be quick sincerely. The Performance Learning Center, Skylar Darden also received a scholarship to the University of Alabama in the amount of $158,550 for national merit, her national merit finalist status. Peyton Rawson received a scholarship to the University of Alabama. He attends Mount Pleasant High School. And Daniel Antonelli from Hickory Ridge High School was a national merit finalist as well. Thank you all and congratulations.
How proud are we of those young men and women? Just wonderful work. All right, Mr. Rusty Parker is before us, and he's going to be talking about career and technical education honors.
Good evening.
Take it away, Mr. Parker.
The Technology Student Association is a national organization of students engaged in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. It's open to students enrolled who have completed technology education courses. TSA membership includes over 233,000 middle and high school students in approximately 2,000 schools spanning 49 states. The young people that are standing before you are the four-time Technology Student Association State Champions from J.M. Robinson High School. It'll take me just a second to read all these names. It's Cheryl Marie Anderson, Nathan Bell, Erin Bennett, Roy Day, Seth Doran, Jason Ellisor, Elijah Grafton, Brendan Mangum, John Mergenthal, Jake Moore, Kyle Moran, Jalina Oliver, Jacob Ridmore, Eric Ridenhour, Garrett Robertson, Jonathan Stead, and Brandon Vu, and their advisor is the incomparable Dave Parisi. Congratulations. We also had a team from Cox Mill High School's FCC LA Club, and I'm not sure if they're in the room this evening, so we're going to skip down to Northwest and do this next for Northwest. Skills USA is a national organization serving teachers and high school and college students who are preparing for careers in technical skilled service occupations. The Skills USA Championships are competitive events showcasing the best career and technical education students in the nation. Contests begin locally and continue through the state and national levels. This year's Skills USA events were held in Greensboro at the Corey Convention Center April 26th through 28th. Skills USA first-place winners for Cabarrus County Schools are Matthew Phillips in drafting one from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Congratulations. His advisor is Mr. Stephen Thacker. Good to see you, Stephen. Also a winner from Mount Pleasant High School is Christian Klutz. He was first place in Masonry One. Congratulations. And his advisor is Mr. Cody Elward. Good to see you. Congratulations.
All right, we're going to have the Fine Arts Armor, Dr. Crystal Hill Ashley, Dr. Ross, Roth is going to be presenting. Thank you. I'm sorry, you're switching the doctors on me.
Yes.
Yeah, who's good with Neilie? Just kind of bring it in, put it down there on the end. All the way to the end. All right, so we're just going to move you a little bit further down. This is pretty good. So if you can see my lens, my lens can see you. I'm going to get this half first.
All right, while he's doing that, I'm going to go ahead and begin our recognition. We would like to recognize the following middle school and high school arts education programs for excellence in chorus and theater. We are first going to recognize our middle school programs that scored superior ratings at state contests. First, I'd like to recognize Marla Young. She is the chorus teacher at C.C. Griffin Middle School, and her sixth and seventh grade chorus scored superior in performance insight reading at Wingate University. Next, I'd like to recognize Jody Skeen, who is the chorus teacher at Harris Road Middle School. Her chorus programs in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade received superior ratings at Wingate University and at Carowinds, and also her New Beginning Show Choir also received a superior rating at Kings Mountain High School. There were also two students in the Harris Road Middle School Honors Program, Chorus Program, who were in the Honors Chorus for the state of North Carolina. So we'd like to congratulate these students as well. Our next middle school chorus program that we'd like to recognize is from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, and the teacher is Joyce Cook, and her, the Titan Voices Chorus Group, received a superior rating at the 2017 Carowinds Music Festival. So congratulations to all of our middle school students.
All right, so our high schools have a number of recognitions tonight. I'm going to try to make sure we call everything out exactly as is. So we'll start with Central Cabarrus High School under the leadership and direction of Ethan Price. The Chamber Choir earned a superior rating at performance adjudication for choral music performance. Individual, excuse me. You have individual and group awards. The Women's Ensemble, superior rating for large ensemble choral music performance adjudication. And then we'll go through the individual awards. Lane Palmer is seated in NC Honors Chorus, and then seated in the Choral Festival Choir are Amity Cameron Sayer, Drew Coley, Alana Cooper, Rashawn Elliott, and Irvin Ortiz. And then seated in the 910 All Carolina Select Choir is Cora LaChao, and those students are from Central Cabarrus High School. Now from Cox Mill High School under the leadership and direction of Jennifer Cook, are you Jennifer? Oh, hey. From Cox Mill High School, seated in 910 All Carolina Select Choir is Zion Zalakoffer. Is that right? Good. All right. And then seated in the Choral Festival Choir is Miles Arnold and Allison McGee. These are students from Cox Mill High School. And then moving on to Hickory Ridge High School, Kirby Treadaway, okay? Under the direction and leadership of Kirby Treadaway. We'll start with Advanced Women's Chorus. There's so many on here, excuse me. Advanced Women's Chorus. I'll start with the Chamber Choir. Chamber Choir had a superior rating at the music performance adjudication. Having trouble reading my own notes, and I apologize. And then we'll do individuals. So seated in NC Honors Chorus are Rebecca Reed and Sean Murphy, and in 910 All Carolina Select Choir are Jessica Benson, Emmanuel Levon, Jonathan Long, Rebecca Mull, and Noah Ward. Seated in Mars Hill University Choral Festival Choir, Keenan Haywood, Andrew Kahn, Emily King, Jonathan Long, Matthew McKee, and Sean Murphy. And then earning a superior rating for Advanced Women's Choir, superior rating at Wingate University for the music performance adjudication, and then for your Beginning Chorus, a superior rating. All right, moving on to J.M. Robinson High School, seated in, under the direction of Vivian Howard. Thank you very much. Holding your plaque, I see that. Seated in NC Honors Chorus are Andrew Krug, Colin Whitley, or is it Whitley? Whitley. Okay. And then seated in the Choral Festival Choir are Maya Hunter. And then receiving a superior in Grade Five Music is the Robinson Advanced Ensemble and Chamber Choir. Congratulations to J.M. Robinson. I don't see Mr. Howard. Is Drew here tonight? Okay. We will call out Northwest Cabarrus High School, under the direction and leadership of Drew Howard. Seated in the MHU Choral Festival Choir are Brittany Cherry and Destiny Hunter. Congratulations to students from Northwest Cabarrus High School. Okay, moving on to our theater department, we'll start with Cox Mill High School under the direction of Miriam, is it Kukendall? And I don't think Miriam is here tonight, correct? So a lot of awards for the Cox Mill High School Theater Department, so I'm just going to read these. Wes Felker and Jess Hall received an excellence in design. Annabelle Kularin received an excellence in assistant directing. Charlie Snyder, outstanding in stage management. Morgan Pestic, an excellence in acting. The whole cast of Us and Them was awarded an excellent rating. The cast of Ant Leaf was awarded the outstanding. Miriam Kukendall herself was awarded an excellence in directing, and the entire cast of Ant Leaf was awarded an honorable mention overall. Huge props there for that Cox Mill High School Theater Department. Then moving on to J.M. Robinson, under the direction and leadership of Annie Boger. A score of superior for award for production design. Excellence in acting goes to Andrew Krug, and a rating of superior and award for properties design. Excellence in acting to Rebecca Manigan. And then, oh, that's J.M. Robinson. Congratulations. And then our final of the night, under the direction of Andy Rassler from Northwest Cabarrus High School, is an outstanding ensemble for Barbers on outstanding achievement in design and production costume for Taylor Ronaldo. So congratulations to all of you. So we are going to shake hands, or maybe high-fives, as you walk through. If you guys will turn around and say, the board would like to congratulate you.